I'm gonna go ahead and start with the Education Committee. Julie Campbell.
Here.
Nancy Brown here. Steve Rowe. Gary Kemp. Junior Holdrum here. Bishop Hossen.
Here.
Mr. Rysnick.
Here.
Kelly Collins. And before we vote on the agenda, we need to change. Dr. Bowers and Dr. Carpenter are not going to be here, and that's kind of my fault because this is only the second day of school, and they're actually hiring, moving some teachers around. And I thought we may possibly cancel when we were emailing back and forth. So I told Dr. Bowers that she did not have to come. So we're gonna take number six off. And that... So I need a motion to approve.
I like a motion to approve.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the... We didn't have any minutes in July, but we did have in June. Let everybody read those. I need a motion to approve those.
Move it.
Did somebody say anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're down to public comments for the Education Committee. Oh, for the Education Committee. Okay, now we're down to old business. And Chris, is he in here? Oh, he's here, sorry, sorry. He and I have been talking about recycling again in the schools, and he thinks he may have some plan. And would you ask about it now or wait for it?
I need to finish moving forward with that. I think it's a good idea. I think all the principals are excited about it, and it is the cans and receives just the printer paper slash individual copy papers. And then we'll have to set up a way to get it picked up. So I'm working on that portion right now, but I don't have a truck to actually pick it up. So I actually got my front end loader guys back today, thank God. So hopefully we can work it out some way. We can make that with a trustee or something of that nature.
Okay, if we can get the actual recycling tubs out to the schools, we can get a start, because right now, as a lot of teachers are going through a lot of paper that to clean out and so forth. So I don't wanna lose that opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get on that this week, since we're getting some equipment going.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there's not any new business right now. So we add commissioners' comments. I can say that we are very busy at my school. We have over a hundred students enrolled new. They're not new to the county. Some of them are new to the county, but some of them are from Keeneburg, and two early childhood classes have moved into our school. So we have a lot of new students at our school, and it's been enough to where they're moving some teachers. I think Hampton Elementary is getting two new teachers, just because we're getting so full. So I'm sure the other schools are adjusting to the closing also. And Dr. Carpenter said he would give us an update on that. But since it's the only second full day of school, and it... Well, it wasn't even a full day, because they let us out a little bit early for the storm. So it's... The first week of school is a little crazy, until you decide and find exactly who's moving in and who's moved out. So he can get a better update on that. And maybe we can have him on the full commission meeting to give a short.
Sure.
I'll talk to him about that, too. So anybody have any questions, or...
Yes. When are they gonna start teaching the three Rs again in school? Because you put that they have...
Can we have your name and your comments? You need to come up and speak to the committee. We already passed other comments, but we will... And this committee doesn't select the curriculum.
This is...
What's your address, sir?
Me? 259 Perry at Johnson City. I drive the road mountain every day to work. The only question I have is, we put on the dumpsters cardboard only, paper only. We don't have... They don't have the resources at recycle to separate that stuff. I go to pick up the cardboard, and it's plumb full of paper. I go to pick up the paper, it's plumb full of cardboard.
At the schools?
At the schools. And I've talked to principals and everything, and they would... They say, "Well, we'll take care of it." Mr. Schuler can tell you, they don't have the resources down there to sort through all of that.
Well, this will be addressed in landfill.
We have ninety... We have ninety-eight dumpsters to pick up every week. That's not counting just the cardboard. That's not counting the paper. So something needs to be done.
Well, that's why we're discussing it, and this is something that would need to be discussed with Dr. Carpenter.
Okay, that's just...
And with the new landfill.
I'm the one that's been picking it up, and it's been a mess.
Well, that's something that...
Thank you. And ma'am?
And the landfill supervisor will need to address that also.
Ma'am, I didn't hear you after public comment on that.
Turns out you haven't said, does anybody have?
No, that was for on something else, not the recycling.
Well, this is the school system's recycling.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And what... Can I say something, please?
You need to come up and give your name.
I will. I didn't come down here for this, but it just... It's more than price, once it's just out all the road. I do a lot of recycling myself.
What's your name?
More than price. I come down here for the road, but y'all brought this up, and I'm really big into recycling. The... What the gentleman was talking about, you end up with a lot of trash and stuff. So if you do school recycling, you need to... Some way to close it in.
Well, this is only this type of paper that we're talking about.
I understand.
And the tubs are special, that only have a slit at the top, where the paper will slide in.
You'd be surprised what people throw away, and if they can get it.
Well, that's all we're talking about right now.
Okay. Well, I know there's, you know, there are things that you can recycle, but if it's big enough, people don't have to pay to have the trash hauled off, it'll end up in them bins, because I've done seen it.
Well, these are large trash cans. They're gonna be in the school, in the building. They're not going to be outside of the building.
You're not gonna have a dumpster.
No, these are just big trash cans that I...
Sort of like what they use for shredding and stuff.
Right, that are gonna be inside of the school.
I understand.
The teachers will use those to... That's all this is.
I got a good idea. Thank you for entertaining me.
Any commissioner comments? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Education. All in favor? Any opposed?
I did.
You've got to call to order the highway committee meeting.
Julie Campbell.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Steve Rowe.
Here.
Gary Kemp.
Here.
Junior Holdrum here. Bishop Hossen.
Here.
Mr. Rysnick.
Here.
Kelly Collins.
Here.
I get a motion for approval of the agenda. Motion. Second. All in favor? All opposed? And we can get a motion to approve the July minutes.
Motion for a brief.
All in favor? Two second if that. All opposed? Public comments, more?
Yeah, on the road. This is what I actually came down here for.
You actually come last month for it.
Well, yeah, well, you know, I was trying to change the mood. I thought we were gonna have a fight. Stoudholler, I've noticed that we knocked two rocks out there, and it has helped that curve some, but... It's sort of like having three teeth, and the middle one knocked out, and the other two still sticking out. Two sticking out, and not only did it do that, the two pieces they did knock out, they pushed across the road on somebody else. And my other question is, where are we on getting that fixed?
We started on it. We had to pull off all the storms, tree removal, flooding. We just had to go back up there yet to... We had to start right at the lower end. I picked some of them rock off with a hammer that's sticking out.
I understand, yeah. Well, there's mud right there.
Got back up there yet with all the storms and stuff we've been doing with.
Are you gonna pull the rocks off that whoever owns that property from the street?
Back up. He probably just laid them over there, and we didn't have to pick all the big rock up at one time and haul it back in.
Well, it's not my business, it's not my property, but if it was, I'd be like anybody else, you know?
Just let them over. Once we pick all the rock off, you can just go back and pick them up.
Well, what's your intentions on getting the road fixed?
Widening it?
Well, not so much widening it, just fixing it. The patches are higher than the potholes.
When you put a patch, I saw you riding on the patch. A patch on top of a patch makes a rest.
I know it.
I don't know about the...
And the water that's washed out from under the road.
Right, once he gets on it through the shoulder, we'll rip, wrap, try to fix the shoulder of the road, keep that water washed out. Maybe put a cross crane in, put that water back on that other side, to be where that ditch is. So to come down and try and hang out that shoulder of the road. It used to go across on that other side.
Well, I'm the only one coming down it, but everybody asks me, because they see me, they know I've been coming down here. And they was wanting to know what the status was. Is there anything for Morton Holler? That you've got one... You've got one outcrop that's sticking out, and you've got one of two choices, hit the guy's mailbox or hit the rock. But if you miss both of them, you're going to get the pothole.
As soon as we get the pothole patch back, we will track down that patch. Today's plan, if you guys can see, if the plant's around, you can get no patch.
I understand.
We ran today, but they didn't, because of the storm against.
We've had a lot of bad weather. But, yeah, they... I know the petition I brought down, they do wanna run the road if... I don't know if you can, which...
If you can, you got it.
Yeah. All righty. That's all I've got, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your work.
Any other public comment?
Thank you.
Put your name in your address. My name is Craig Kimbrough. I live at 495 Bishop Hollow Road. I'm here on behalf of the vast majority of the people that live on that road. We've got a petition here and some pictures. I moved out there in 2000. I think the road was paved last time in 91. I wanna check on that, but since 2000, it's just been a... I'd say I just use the word struggle to get things squared away. There's been some different people come in and out of that holler that had things done that we were unable to get done. And now the road's just in a pretty dismal shape. I don't know if you wanna look at these pictures while we're talking for me to explain any of them to you.
Yes, I can have some of them.
Do have a petition here with Scott 90... I think 98% of the people that live on that road who have signed it, who have requested that the road be paved, starting where I think y'all are gonna do some work for what used to be Dan Holler's property, coming out to the end of the holler where most of us live at. But here's the petition with the names on it. I don't have my phone number on it, but I can do that to you if you need to talk to me about anything.
You say Bishop Hollow or Bishop Rowe?
Bishop Hollow Road. It's off of Blue Springs down on the bottom end. The road's slipping off in places out there where it's about a 150-foot drop to the river. That's a big concern of mine, because of six kids coming in and out of there.
How many people lives on that road?
Let me see here. Like around 80. If you can count these names, I don't think anybody signed it twice. This as well.
Yes.
You're more welcome to keep the pictures. Like I said, if you need to holler at me about something, you can. We ain't here to pick no fights, we just want it done. I think it's time. Everybody here would agree to that.
There was a list of roads that were slated to... Was that one of them?
I'm not sure about that list. I went and looked at that the other day, make aware of it. And by the end of September, we should be able to paint it.
That's good news.
That's the plan.
Well, that's... I've heard that before. It's why we're here, because we've heard it a dozen times. Cobal come out there and seen us in the hay field, and was like, "We're gonna do it this spring."
Wait till September. If it's not paved by then, you come back.
Is that fair enough?
I'll take that.
That work? Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else wanna make a public comment regarding the highway?
They got two.
June McPherson. Bearson, something like that. 179 Bishop Hollow Road. And really, I just wanna give you the pictures. We live near the beginning of Bishop Hollow, and you can see from the first few pictures that along the road, there's a huge drop-off. And we have horses in the fields right next to it, and there's a big hole there. And all the way up through there, there's holes on the road. And this is just an example, and it's right at the beginning. So there's places like this all the way up to the end. There's duplicate pictures, the ones he has. Also up near, more near the end of it, there's a fence that's been put up. And a lot of it's torn down or knocked down the trees, and you can see the damage to that there. Along the side, the pavement's dropped off, and the side is really, really soft. I walked up there and myself just stepped on it, and it would give. So if anybody gets off the pavement, they could easily go down the big drop-off that he was talking about. That's just to support, give more support to what he's saying.
Is that the pitch you're talking about that's tearing, being tore down or whatever?
I tried to just hit the...
How many miles long is that road? Just curious.
You can see that's what it is.
Fence was not put up with...
I couldn't hear your name.
June.
June.
You leave me first.
June.
June.
July.
Okay. Great, Jen.
That fence was not put up by the county. It was put up by the man that owned the property.
Was it?
That fence ain't gonna do that.
I don't know that, it's on their property.
Well, then we need a fence.
Yeah, the fence ain't on the county.
Really, they put the fence up, to my knowledge, Willie might tell you more, people was going to throw trash off the holler.
That's what I saw.
They got a big chain link fence.
Yeah, I remember when they put it up.
And they just throw it up in the fence. That's all they do, throw it up in the fence. We will pave it by then September.
All right. That work. Any other public comments?
Mayor.
Give me your opinion.
Timothy Bump-Bergner. 479 Bishop Hollow Road. Well, like I said, you know, the road's breaking up. I've lived there for 48 years. It's been paved twice, 48 years. My mama was a teenager, and I guess except by her, we was a teenager. Towels stopped up. Previous road supervisor, Detective Jack Bergens, he stopped one of their towels up. Was a favor for a woman. I mean, God rest his soul, black dude, but what happened? My graveyard, they tile, refused to unstop it. Started my tile up at the driveway. He's saying, "I'm in pictures there, you see a mud hole." Eighty-three foot cobra goes under the road. We can't get nobody to stop it. So, you know. But it's more than road fixed.
Can you address that, too?
Oh, yeah, for paving, we had to save a ditch.
Okay.
Check everything out. Just like on the top everywhere.
They filled the ditch up along my yard. It was like... Jack Bergens.
They filled the tile in.
Yeah. Then he poured the cobra, or poured asphalt down along the side of the road. Somebody didn't want the water running across the road on her property. You can see it in the pictures, I made it up.
We used to turn the snow cup there, and it blocked the salt.
I was sure we didn't, I own that.
Somebody did, because I went out there to push, and it was blocked in.
That was a bus turning around, my mother and father urgently agreed.
Yeah.
As long as the... As long as... As long as it... And I thought... As long as the bus running, it can turn there. The bus did run in there in 10 to 15 years. So I just filled it back in, made it my yard. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stuff here. You got a report you want to give, Patrick?
Yeah, you've got it. I'll just step back here. I'm sure several of them had a call. On the Gap Creek Bridge, it's been closed. The state closed the bridge. State's gonna build that bridge 100%, because when they give us Gap Creek Road, that's a county road, when they built the Mary Pat. And the bridge is bad, and it's 100% gonna be rebuilt by the state. They closed it, says they're gonna build it. I'll see when I can get a date on it. All I can get out of it, it's in the design stage. Don't know how long it'll take. Closed it off, because that's state rules. We don't do, can buy by what they say, we lose our state funding, as far as state aid money-wise. Other than that, clean out the breeze, mud, storms. Powell's been down to recycling center a couple of times. I think he's gonna go back down there and finish a little bit. Says here that we've, again, paving in the secret, the school building. We finished that Thursday, three days in a row, to get that thing for school up. So that's complete.
Okay.
We plan on paving our state aid project. It's supposed to start on 21st August. That's paving the main bogey road, almost seven mile. That'd be state aid. We contracted that out of summer towage. Routine mowing, pothole patching. When you get asphalt, like I said, it took us a while on that parking lot, we tried to get by there. And on top of it, we're gonna night shift, because it's paving everything here in town, so you gotta do a plumb, make a best of it. Pretty good hip to weight to haul asphalt to patch Paul. So we was due to do the parking lot, sign replacements. That they still knocked down, turned down. Got the signs from the recycling center, got them made. Are we gonna go to them for that?
They should be...
The cardboard paper flashing, manual.
Going on the...
That is, we will... Have to do some bridge changing, weight limits. They've inspected all our bridges. Whatever they tell you to put on, we put on. We have to stand down the three time. We're having to close one, and it just goes along a gravel road, not named bridge. We'll take it out, put a big orange pipe in.
A three-time bridge. Three-quarter time truck, like that thousand pounds.
Three ton, three ton. Second family.
I didn't know they raided.
Yep. That's what we put on. Some of them, some of them you can do maintenance on, but let us do somewhat upgraded to bring it back up. Most time when they get out three time, they... We're waiting on a maintenance report, and I would say for their...
The bridge gets raided that load, and we look at rebuilding it.
Whenever they put it on the list. See, they give us a list.
This bridge actually is on that list, but they follow that list for us. I mean, we can't change variations, and they just build them as they are on the list, you know? That's exactly the way the Gap Creek Bridge was. It was on the T-Dot list to be replaced, but T-Dot turned the bridge over to the county. The county accepted the bridge, the roadway from T-Dot, and the bridge stayed on the list to be retired. And that's the same way all our state bridges are that the state inspects. Anything over a 20-foot width structure, the state, he inspects that bridge every two years. They give us maintenance report, what we need to do to it, and they do the weight limits. It's out of our control what they put on. They have their engineers and the field inspectors, they set the weight limits, there's nothing we can do about. If we don't stay in compliance and do what they say, they cut your state aid funding out, and we have no state funding. So we're just... We're at their mercy, far as the state aid bridge program works.
That's about it. Any more questions? I was sorry, another minute.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask a couple down in the west end, the Charlie Bayless Bridge behind Milligan. What is the state saying about it?
It's in design, that's all I can get out of it.
In design, okay. Because that last storm got it pretty good.
It did. We got... It was piled up, I bet you the... When I went down that lot, the debris looked like a beaver dam, hopping here that wall. Two foot high, doesn't have sticks, garbage cans, forkers swings, chairs, you name it. We got cleaned out, yeah, it's...
I saw a trampoline.
I mean, you'll see anything. I bet there's 25 balls in there, basketball, soccer ball.
They do have the corridor report back. And usually, once they get that back, it recedes pretty fast after that. But we do know the corridor report is back, and they drill that to see if they're on bedrock or if they're not on bedrock to do what they need to do to put the footers in. So that we do know the corridor report is back on that bridge. Corridor report is back on the Gap Creek Bridge. So it'd be fast, it could still be drawn out, just depending on what design they decide to go with, far as on the footers.
And Shannon, you're aware that the president of Milligan College has said that we can cut through that field?
I talked to him. I forgot, they called the other day. One president, he had called, was talking about that, because they're actually thinking about maybe putting turf for the softball field, a girls softball field. Want to know if he... I said, "I can tell you, if you put it in, it floods and it washes it or not, I don't know." I do know that when I talked to Gary Kiesinger, he came to shop, talked to me about it, some different things, that they won't let them raise it. They go a little bit wider, but not much. So it's really, the way he talked, it's gonna be kind of the same shape, but they're gonna try to straighten it out some. Can't raise the bridge any, because you're on North Creek.
Okay. And then my last thing is, I've been involved in the communication between Mayor Woodby and a citizen in my district about the striping of the roads out there.
I was getting told that.
Yes, and I just wanted to tell you that he's not the first gentleman to complain about that. As much as a year ago is when I started receiving complaints about the lack of striping. And I told Superintendent Cobal that, you know, I just wanted, in case there was not continuity, I wanted you to know that it goes back that far.
Okay. Our paving, our striping is contracted, so we, you know, they... We had to wait, kind of want to come in, try to get everything that we can in, instead of coming out waiting on us to just to strip, you know, a small section of road. Maybe a possibility when they come in to do the state aid, bogey road, we might maybe get some of that strapping. If the money's... If the money's there for strapping.
Alright, thank you Superintendent.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to thank you for assisting us down recycling and at the landfill, it really helped out a lot. You know, that, you know, hopefully we'll have some money, I'm manipulating that right now to get the rest of the crap going personally.
Recycle?
Yes.
They just give us a call?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I've got one other, that's probably a question for Josh, I've, uh, on the Cedar Grove and Day Buck Road, I've had several complaints. Uh, been several on Facebook, that's one of my things. When you come out on Cedar, from Day Buck on the Cedar Grove, me and Roger have been there fifteen hundred times. There's a row of bushes that sits in behind the curb, it's curb, forward gutter curb, in man's yard. I'm not, I cut bushes in a man's yard.
It's not within our right of way.
It's what I think, I mean, I don't know what else to tell you. They say it's dangerous, because they can't see to pull out if somebody gets killed.
Is the road not go from the center to so far off the edge?
Depends on something on what the right way is. See, it's two foot behind the curb, it's got a concrete curb, what around it? When you pull out, it's kind of dangerous, and you look right handed, Day Buck coming this way, you have to get out there a little further.
I don't think where you're talking about, I don't even know what that's.
Over there. You can't move the grass more, because it's on the side of the curb, you can't reach it, plus it's got boulders in there about that big. And it just brushes, screw up any.
If there's any part of it protruding into the right way, you can trim it.
Right. I've got the same issue on over in Central, on Taylor, if I ever come down. Could look at the school, you look left handed, and you've got four foot of grass, and all of those bushes is hanging out. You have to get out in the road further, but it's four foot off the right way, so.
Has anybody talked to a landowner at this particular intersection?
I never could get a hold of them people over on the, Day Buck, I haven't talked to people live on Central.
If you're willing to allow it, you know?
Me and Roger tried to get a hold of them one time, of course, with daytime, nobody's there, I like, try to go one evening or so, or on the weekend, try to get a hold of them. But, uh, that's just, if that comes up, that isn't them.
Hands are kind of tied on that one. You know, um, old business, we got to set, set a date for the bridge dedication in Danner subdivision. It's Cobal, August the twenty-sixth at one P M, it's on a Saturday. It already went before the full commission, um, to dedicate that bridge.
What's the name of the bridge?
Rose Cobal, correct?
Loretta, Loretta Cobal.
Loretta Cobal.
Peters, Peters Cobal. Loretta Peters Cobal.
There you go.
Loretta Peters?
I was completely wrong.
Say the twenty-sixth?
It's on a Saturday. One o'clock. We can vote on that? Do we need to?
You don't, I mean, if you're announcing that's where it is, it is.
Okay, no, that's good. Um, so have any new business that's been discussed? Um, Commissioner comments, Donnie, you got it?
I've got a few comments to make about the Nanticoe Hill Road. The log yard moved in. On the Nanticoe Hill Road, they have their own access off of Mount Tene. They have not completed and finished that access. Eighteen wheelers and triax was loaded with logs are going up Nanticoe Hill. It's not been on Nanticoe, it's one tractor. You made a tractor trailer or a triax were loaded, and I was up there when I met one. I had to trespass on a person's property to get around that triax. There's about five loads, average of five loads a day, eighteen wheelers going up that road. And I know the man's got great investment in his business up there. He makes stairs, uh, he's got money to fix the road off of Mount Tene, but he hasn't. And, uh, I've got several complaints, uh, about the road, I've got pictures they've sent me about eighteen wheelers. Not a lot of damage, as I, as I talked to Shannon, uh, on the road yet, but when you're putting, uh, four hundred thousand pound on that road uh, every day, and it's consistent, uh, that's equivalent to, uh, ten cars is equivalent to about eighty thousand pound, that's one truck load. And I did notice when I was on it today, the pavement's getting some waves in it, you might have too, I'm not sure, from the wave. It's, it's waving the road, like you would stop at a red light and see where the tractor and the traffic stopped. Um, but there's some concern there from the resident, uh, safety wise, uh, passing one of those tractor trailers, having to back up. And I know there's some older people that can't back up, I've got a sister that can't back, can't back a car. And it's, it's hard on some of them that can't back up, and that tractor trailer, eighteen wheelers, he don't have nowhere to let go. I mean, he can back off Nanticoe, and I don't think he wants to do that. But, there is a, there is a provision, the county officials have authority to put a weight limit on county roads. It takes, it takes a lot of cooperation. It takes the, the road department, highway department, uh, you have to get T-Dot, uh, T-Dot's engineers involved to establish a weight limit. And then it comes to law enforcement, if, if they put a weight limit on it, to enforce that weight limit. And according to, uh, C-TAS number eighteen forty-seven, uh, the only, you can put a fine on it, county, county commissioner will do that. Put a fine on it, but no more than fifty dollars for overweight. I don't know that, I know he, the fellow that owns the lot's gonna try to fix the road, but what we do, what can we do in the meantime? It's been going on for about three months, uh, and they're continuing to haul logs over the road. There is concern, as I said, from the road, some things, about passing, putting off on somebody else's property. Where I had to do, I had to get my car all the way off to get around the truck, and I was in somebody's yard. I'll leave that up to, it takes, it takes some people to get used to, I mean, it, it takes the commissioners, it takes the highway department, or the highway committee. It takes superintendent, law enforcement, and the attorney to put a weight limit on, on a road. And I don't know that this county's got any truck, any roads with weight limit. That would be the first one, if it ever happens, it never happened, but because I, I represent that part of the district, I think it's my duty to say something to this committee about it. It's up to the committee to do what they will with it, if you'd like to see the law, right here it is. You're welcome to see it.
I've been at, two different times, talked to Mr. Carr, spoke with him another time on the phone. They've got a three hundred thousand dollar investment in that log yard, they're, they pay a lot of taxes within the county, and that's got, he's got approval for sixty grand from the parent company that, that runs, that owns the yard, to pave that road in nineteen E, and he's in process of working on it. So I feel that the problem is gonna go away as soon as he completes his road. Um, as far as the damage on the road and the restriction. If the truck is damaging the road, that's why they pay big money to register a big truck, they pay hip to tax. They pay a lot of fees and taxes on road usage, so they're, they're covering any damage there's going, through their taxes that they pay. Um, like I said though, I feel that problem is gonna be cured in time, we've got to be patient. Um, I just don't feel there's, there's a whole lot that we should do, as long as he's making effort to fix the road.
Also, I've got to comment on that too. I spoke with the T-Dot two, off of the main road where they're fixing now. Guy didn't put a tile in there legal, so really into a battle over that right now.
Yeah, they gotta get that resolved.
And as soon as they get that down, it's like, oh me.
Connection permit.
Road has to be widened. And as he was saying there, there is no weight limits on county roads. And as you said, they pay about three thousand dollars for that sticker that goes on that truck.
I've got two trucks, I understand what they're paying.
And it's unreal.
They're paying for the damage.
If they do any damage, then they're responsible for it, they will fix it. But, you know.
And then you look at your other problem, if you do restrict that, somebody needs to load the driveway gravel, when you get a dump truck up here, triax. Weighing seventy-four thousand pounds, are we gonna find that out, because he's wanting some driveway gravel? You start with a big can of worms when you start doing that. But like I said, I, I really, I'm very confident Stephen's working to get the problems resolved on the connection permit on nineteen E and getting the road fixed. And I believe this problem, if they can just be patient for a little while, will go away.
You said they have to fix a tile first?
Uh, we put one in too small, they did get permission from the state to do it.
Who did that?
Stephen Carr was, uh, American State, they're, they're, they're loving that right now. Were they gonna widen the road, they got the top of the tile way too small, they didn't know what, I guess they'd do it, but. They said they were gonna widen that road out too, so they'll get it fixed. I, I, I'm pretty confident it'll get fixed and be taken care of. Yeah, I'm a little tired.
Any other Commissioner comments?
I got one comment, uh, I should have brought it up. Uh, did you get a, Shannon, did you get a message from Danny Deal?
Molly Collins?
Yeah, Molly Collins Road.
We're going back to the patch today, but the plant is far up till, ten o'clock, without anybody else.
I didn't, well, I do think. They said it, I'll wait across from room.
And, I don't know, we'll patch tomorrow. I mean, it's full of water, but.
I just gotta give it.
We can get to it, yeah, I'm right on my desk.
Send me an email.
Yeah, Danny give it to me, yeah.
Nothing else?
Jackson, before you close it, I will say, your all's information, uh, as you know, the road superintendent is gonna be appointed at the commission meeting this month in August. I let Shannon know, I just got notification today, the qualification period's over, and Shannon and Mr. Ricky Glenn are the two certified candidates who will be applying for the appointment here this month, full commission. That's, of course, the appointment until the next election.
Which is?
Next year.
Okay, I'll.
Yeah, at this time next year.
I got you.
So, that's, uh, coming up this month.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, since he's been doing this role, since Roger left. Does he get back paid from that date forward, or just from when he gets appointed?
Uh, yeah, there's no, you know, the, the law would just require when he's officially appointed, so anything before that would be up to.
Wanna make a motion?
Let's take, see a man do something.
Put a motion on the floor.
I think, when you take over. What, when you take over, when Roger left?
First, first of June, Roger left last.
So June, June one. Wanna make a motion, June one?
I write on this, they're not the state pay the superintendent's salary. Does the state pay the, the superintendent's salary?
No, I mean, there's a mandated salary by the state, but county pays the salary.
That's what I get.
So, wanna make a motion for June one? Till, his appointed date, I'd like to see him paid for that amount of time at the superintendent's pay rate, instead of what he's being paid at now.
Second.
This'll be at the next full commission meeting?
Well, first, if he is appointed.
June first though, till.
Till that day. I'd like to see.
Whoever's appointed, whether it be him or Mister.
Was voted on, so your motion's just till the commission meeting, and then we'll have to do another motion with whoever's officially appointed.
From that point, they, if they're appointed, they'll be getting the pay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second his motion.
Mr. Carr's already seconded.
I'd like to, okay, sorry.
There's gonna be a voice lock right there.
Call for a vote.
It's, uh, the motion is to pay Shannon full superintendent pay, starting June one.
Yes, from, well, he took over as June one, so he needs.
Be starting.
Back pay for June till nine, or till what?
When it first, yeah. I'll just begin to meet the point.
I think it needs to be postponed.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Nancy Brown? Steve Burrow?
Yes.
Jerry Kemp?
Yes.
Andrew Holdren?
Yes.
Jason Closeen?
Yes.
Jason Raznick?
Yes.
Billy Collins?
Yes.
So I want you to send that to budget though, Rock.
I don't know what happened with Rogers, hey, if there's unused funds in there, I don't know, that'd be a terrible question.
Attorney Martin, our motion is supposed to state where the money's coming from, Rock.
Uh, generally, that'd be a good idea to let budget know what you're thinking, but like I say, I, I don't, if, I guess if she, if Rogers' place stopped, that, that money would still be in that line.
I'll amend it, too.
Well, but he, he left June, so I don't know if it was, well, surely the budget for the, for the salary for the year, yeah, yeah.
Could be some payouts. Could be some payouts. Your vacation costs, all this other stuff, that's above beyond, so, of course, he don't eat overtime.
Yeah, there wouldn't really be any, any of this, his salary, yeah, I mean, now, they might have had some payouts for other employees that took some money away for vacation comp, because I know Marquita left too, and so, some of that may have eaten it, I'm not sure, that, that's a terrible question.
I think, like, I'm aiming to do that to pull it from the superintendent's line out, or?
The place it could come is unused funds in the superintendent's line, or, uh, their lamp. For that temporary time.
Carolyn said there is money in the line out, she should take her act.
She didn't say.
That'd be direct, that should be the.
Alright.
Available funds are in the supervisor's line.
Thanks for that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Hey, we're, we're starting the landfill committee, before I call them, leaving the order. Uh, you guys are welcome to stay for the landfill, if you want. You wanna leave, I mean, you was here for the highway.
We appreciate y'all.
You trying to run us off here?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
I got, I was just, I was just saying, you can sit to the next one if you want.
Care yourself. Don't affect Timber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all. Okay, and call this meeting to order at six forty-seven. I asked them to go ahead and use the previous roll call for these other meetings, it's, it's the same. Can I do that? The approval of this agenda is next, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
All in favor? Opposed? And, uh, Ms. Quinn give us copies, but I also printed out, leave a copy over your desk. Uh, the minutes from July the third. We've got two sets of minutes, one, we postponed last, last meeting to approve this meeting. That would have been the minutes from July the fifth. So we got two prior minutes to be approved. Fifth and the third.
We on July now, or?
July, we have a.
July the third was our last meeting. So we needed approval on that, and then the June fifth was put off on the third to bring it back up on this meeting, to approve. Because nobody had a copy of, nobody knew what was in it. So we put it off till this meeting to approve June fifth meeting. Yes.
I'd like my script June fifth.
I'll in favor.
We didn't have the Epstein, please. After Epstein, I was absent. Got me there.
Got me there. Never mind that. It was the July meeting I missed. I'll look yes.
Okay, we got the June the fifth approved. I get approval on July the third.
We'll approve July third.
I'll favor. Make a motion here. Next up is comments.
Hey, I have get this county at the landfill nearly four years of my life. Never once have I had any complaints from anyone about my job performance. That was my own fault. Things that I had been taught to do, yes, I'll admit to that. If I didn't know how to do something, I would ask or figure it out. Around July thirteenth, whenever Chris took over, he stood there in the office with Christina and I. And said that he knows he has nothing to worry about with his quote unquote girls in the office. That he's been playing, paying close attention to the landfill, even coming through as a customer. He pointed out how dedicated and hardworking I was and how I put the landfill and other people before myself. And my help. The last couple of weeks has been a circus, to put it nicely. If we had any questions or concerns, I'm talking about in the office. We would have to catch Chris. I understand that Chris is a busy man. If we were texting, we was told he was in a meeting. If we would call him, he would make it short and sweet, said he was in a meeting. And Christine and I one day was even in mid conversation with him, asking him a question. Or pointing out the invoices that need to be signed. He walked out in mid conversation and we looked at each other like we just wasted our breath. I text him about something concerning a deposit. I waited for a response and nothing. Then I found out that he called another employee to call another employee to come to the landfill and take care of the situation. Instead of just answering me. You know, it's pretty bad when we got to feeling like five minutes of our time wasn't important enough. And people wants to wonder what's wrong with the landfill. Yes, I did message Gary and another commissioner on a couple of subjects. Number one, one was advice on how to communicate with Chris. Cause it's no big secret that we both have strong, straightforward, no BS personalities. And then the other was concerning the other situation that happened at work. Concerning, of course, John and Patrick. It's no big secret. The situation put us in the hole for twelve thousand dollars. Chris was there in the office when I broke down. Cause we found out, everybody knows John has a past. That this even went over his probation in Sullivan County. And we had to come up with five thousand dollars for him to walk into the jail for fifteen minutes and walk out. All this while, we was told when it came back, John would be welcomed back to work. So yes, I was questioning Chris when court papers, I have them right here, where it was dismissed, thrown out of court. So yes, I was asking Chris when John was coming back to work. And his answer was whenever he got a hold at the attorney. A week later, John says, I can't do this. I can't be without employment anymore. John told me to allow a separation notice where he would quit. I handed it to Chris. Chris said, if that's what he wants to do, he will not fight it. I turn around to go, Chris, no, it's not what we want to do, but it's what we have to do. He said that he would have to take it up to the HR department at the courthouse to make sure that John would get his unemployment. I looked at Christina. I said, since when have we had a HR department? Chris then informed me it was Jacqueline and Carolyn. And I said. After all these years, I find out there's a HR department. That's kind of nonsense. He stand, then stated, no, what's nonsense is people going up above my head and contacting the commissioners. And I said, Chris, it wasn't people, it was me. I'll admit to what I do. Cause once again, when you're out twelve thousand dollars over nonsense. Friday. I'm sorry, Thursday. I got nowhere. So I looked at Christina. I said, what do we do now? I read the employee handbook. I thought what we was supposed to do. It said to call the mayor, get a hold of the mayor. I emailed her. No response, cause it was Thursday afternoon. Friday I called her. Her assistant said that she was in the office. She, she put me to her phone. She didn't answer. Never once did we have. An inkling to what was getting ready to happen. Christina and I was sitting there doing the deposit. Chris came in wanting to talk to Stephen, cause we all know it was Stephen's last day. He asked if we was about done with the deposit. I answered yes. He tossed a envelope to me, said, there's your separation notice. You need to get your stuff together and go. I asked for an explanation and he replied that I was unreliable, that he couldn't depend on me. I asked him for an example. He stated that I told him that I took boxes and invoices up to Carolyn. I'm sorry, Chris, that was a lie. It's medically not possible for me to take boxes and invoices up to Carolyn. Cause when I had stomach issues, my muscles in my stomach got messed up. I was trying to tell Chris, there's no way I could have said that. I was trying to tell him, me and Carolyn just talked on the phone the day before. And she was saying it was bank deposits that she needed, not invoices. He wouldn't even give me the time of the day, wouldn't let me talk. So yeah, I said some stuff to Chris I shouldn't have. I'll admit when I'm in the wrong. But when you have somebody pretending to be your friend, I know he's a boss first and foremost, but I'm also human. I respond with the way I'm feeling. When I know my family's doing with that, that's how I respond. And I'm sure you guys would too. I was told. That he walked up to John, shook his hand and says, here's your separation notice stating he was fired. I was told that he told John that Patrick was fired that morning, which Patrick was at work today. So yeah, it's hard for me to say that this nonsense of BS is a retaliation. Because I went above his head, I contacted the commissioners. I went above his head, contact the mayor, which I have yet to talk to her. But how can somebody who's been? I'm gonna say over you for three weeks approximately, give or take. Can tell you that you're unreliable. And that he can't depend on me. And just so everybody knows, not any information on the separation notices is correct. Only thing right on mine is my name as social. Jonathan's name is correct, but not his social. I know I was there a lot longer. So was John. It's got me employed from three six twenty twenty three to eight four twenty twenty three. And that wasn't signed. Mine wasn't signed.
Same ones. We'll move into old business. Yeah, one sec. Some old business you can see there is uh brought up that we need to, which was done being brought up, scheduling for recycling for school. Having that. Can you work on that?
Yes, sir. Now, Mr. Vernon, Mr. Clemens has already picked up and uh Stephen picked up dumpsters last week. Mr. Clemens has come in and running the uh front loader at this time. Assistant helping us out there too on top of running the uh runabout convenience center, which I will see him tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but this is about the uh section of the paper.
The cans, yes. I got to see uh.
People be working.
Yes, sir. Kelly has the cans. There's about fifty of them. They're in Rome Mountain, so we'll get those spread out. It'll take a couple of days. After I talked to Mr. Carpenter, like uh Ms. Collins had spoke, uh, Mr. Carpenter's been very, very busy last few days.
And you may want to wait several days on.
I'm gonna put several days on that, but Mr. Vernon will still pick up the dumpsters.
And they're working on the uh recycle center to get the dumpsters set out.
Yeah, let me ask you a question on that. Uh, we're getting pretty close. Uh, like I said, Mr. Powell and Mr. Perchet. Uh, has really, really assisted us on that. Uh. I'm still looking for the minutes. Were you able to find them, Gary, on the uh approval for the full county commission? Was that how it was? Does anybody remember if that was set or is that coming straight out of our budget?
You remember Brad, when we, we voted uh to full commission to point, what was it? Eight hundred dollars, eight thousand dollars?
That was for the slab and.
Slab.
And uh, adjusted defense.
What month was it?
Through it's been. About five to six months. Yeah, we through budget and then we through full.
We might can help find that minutes for that.
Well, I can't got nothing else to do. Look for that for me tomorrow. I'm pleased, dear. Thank you, man. Cause right now.
I know, I know. We, we voted on it. We took it to full commission.
Right.
Full commission voted approved up to eight thousand dollars for the pad and fence, lary and gravel, whatever. Whatever we.
Yeah, did they ever get a camera moved up there to the corner? Going to.
Camera. Yeah, if we don't put a camera on it, like Mr. Lyons had told you before, if you don't do it, we're going to end up a lot trash, even. Dealing with that, you're still going to end up with some trash. Like Mr. Clemens said, you know, people throw stuff in the recyclings all the time. You know, it's just, it's, it's the nature of the beast. So uh, we're dealing with that, but uh. We'll get it took care of and uh, we got a good driver back here to help us get that going and we'll get the signage up and. I don't know. We'll look at it. I'll talk to some other directors around the state hopefully and figure out how they conquer that battle. It is a battle.
It has been. I put my truck and sixteen foot trailer by your.
No, it'll be tough. I guarantee you my Ford won't turn.
Turned in my truck, but not with the trailer.
No. Well, and we still have all that feeling there. And what's bad is we have a water line.
Water.
Gas, gas line, excuse me, even better, a gas line. That's right there in that general vicinity we have to work around, so. So. It's an inheritance and I will uh deal with it as we can.
Does anyone know if Snap On Two has been contacted?
Yes, sir. I've spoke with uh. We're lacking a better name. Uh, I think it's Mike Campbell. They call him Pumpkin.
Opey?
Opey, that's it, Opey. Yes, Pumpkin, Opey. Anyways, I spoke with him. We're getting ready to deal with that this week, uh, since I got a driver back on recycling and the cardboard. Uh, and like I said, you know. Mr. Clemens works Monday. And I had to send a trustee with him, cause I don't want him hurt where he's had his surgery, but he's. Sure didn't affirm that he is released completely. Uh, today I called and checked on him about midstream, a little bit better midstream, because the day went crazy and he was doing fine. Doing the uh restaurants and things of that nature where he has to open the doors. You know, I sent a trustee, young.
On the manual.
Good manual labor individual. And Thursday I'll send him one up there to uh. The recyc, or excuse me, center with weed here to get that cleaned up too, uh, at Rome Mountain. And I've got him on. And then hopefully Wednesday, if he feels like it, I'm not pressing too hard. Got to take care of your, 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 your older horses and uh. So move that forward. So what I'm trying to do, make it happen. Truck drivers are feeling far between. Less Willie wants to volunteer and.
Is there, is there open rec for a truck driver? Is there, is there open requisition for a truck driver?
There's a advertisement is open right now on Carter County TN dot gov.
Carter County TN. Maybe it was a young guy. Asked me age twenty one, just cut his license. I don't know if we got a road, get tired of it.
Well. I've actually contacted the local Tri-Cities Trucking uh Trucking School. Uh, I thought Stephen had done it and I've mentioned it many times with other people. Anyways, long story short, I've reached out to Matt and he's looking to uh, to put it up on the board and also, cause I need a. I have to endorsement.
This guy's got an A, but I don't know about a paper.
I'm not worried.
He's only twenty one years old. I need to know.
I'd say he's, yeah, but it'd be a good time to, to learn.
I think he'll be late.
We got good drivers right now. Hall, Mr. Degas is there. He's, he's very capable. Uh, uh, Ms. Miller. Somebody show them the proper way to do it. And uh, we'll discuss the trucks here in a few minutes, but go. But yeah, that would be super if he'd like to. I keep uh, at three hundred North Main Street is uh where he can pick up a hard copy.
Okay.
And he can drop his resume off. And uh, if he has one, he can fill out the paperwork and uh.
It'll work.
And that way I can check him out. Thank you, sir.
What about the uh? Home prison of third level?
No, sir. Uh, I wasn't aware of it, but I will check in on that. Uh. I'm sure more than likely there's a lot of cardboard up there. I don't know what the status will be. I'll get with the mayor. And talk to her, who my contact would be.
Adam D there, old business. Uh, Chris wanted me to put that in there. He's got. Something to do.
Yeah. One thing I know that we've, we've missed is this recycling, twenty-four hour community recycling at recycling. We're working on that to get it squared away. I know Ms. Collins is the point of contact as far as getting the. We're working on that to get it squared away. I know Ms. Collins is the point of contact as far as getting the containers and Dr. Carpenter. To get the paper, the, the single sheet paper containers. I think. Ms. Collins stretched herself out to make sure we had the containers and we'll get the. Information on those. And after Mr. Carpenter tells us we can do it, that'd be super. I'm sure right now would have been a best time. I think Thursday's when I found, maybe Wednesday of last week. So kind of shot in the dark on that. Also with that being said, as far as recycling. Our stream of recycling coming in now from our Ford auction. We're looking at, at some of the plastics that they've got because we can take 127 plastics. I'm working with that. Mr. Nave that works for us, he is contacting herb side. See what the plastics generated. You know, the Walmart bags and stuff like that, that's happened too, too, too well. Also, I've spoke with Eastman, Tennessee Eastman, with the gentleman there and we're working on trying to get together and see where else we can do it. And maybe renegotiate something where we do their packing and bailing. I was requested by Mr., he's not here, Mr. McQueen to check into Johnson City. Or we're, I, I just don't foresee that happening anytime soon to go over that area. They have their own recycling program. I just don't foresee it happening. So, you know, I'm doing recycling as I can make it happen. Our truck, it's got a recall on it. So I'm trying to negotiate with the company to see when it's the best time to bring that recall back in. And it deals with the deaf and naturally. Vernon, what kind of truck are you driving?
Mack.
Mack. It's a Mack truck. Sorry.
There's a recall on the deaf on it?
Yes, sir. We've got that recall there. We have to work around. I'm trying to work on our older road truck that we received from Carter County Highway Department. We bought off them. It had new tires put on it. We put the proper front end front tires on it that were, had new tires, new, new skins on them and. Pulled the bumper, fixed the oil leak where it had hit. And it's squared away now temporarily. It's composite oil. But we did a patch job on it to get it going. So that's saving us probably. Ninety dollars a week in oil. So, I mean, I'm really. There's nothing, and I hate to say it like this, there's nothing that doesn't have problems as far as equipment wise. Our burner, I've sent into the state. I was questioning what we need to do to do that for. I'm waiting on the shirt. Gentleman from TDEC to give me a call back from air quality. Once we get that done, then we can start burning our brush again with the air curtain. Right now it's plum full. It's still burning from three weeks ago. So it's still smaller and it's got a lot of dirt to burn, which we'll have moved out. But something else, I mean, where he said on, it's a paragraph D, the old business discussed, that's kind of. Won't pick your offspring. I went through the last years or last six, seven months, I think is what I had you pull, wasn't it? The minutes and trying to take care of what was there, but moving that forward, it's kind of, kind of interesting. So if anybody on the board remembers something that's not happening.
I know something that, you know, I remember some of our early meetings when I first became a commissioner talking about the transfer station was why I spent major money on that. When's the plan to go forward with the transfer station?
I've actually looked at, did some measuring. I've got a kind of a semi plan right now. I got to check with TDEC to see if they'll agree with that. And see if we can move forward with some stuff that we already have there. Do a turnaround, a quick turnaround. I think my personal opinion is we need to rehab that building and go ahead and redo the floor on it. Save the structure, structurally it's sound, but the facade or the, the metal around it's been ripped and moved forward. Then the addition of another area, but I'm working on that.
I brought that up, you know, I was thinking the other day, my understanding that demolition is only going to be open for a couple more years. And then we're going to quit using the landfill for demolition. It's just going to be a transfer station.
Right. And I'm working on that right now. I, I discussed this, I guess, over almost a year ago. And brought it to a few of the commissioners. And I was talking to them while I was down taking my test to recertify. And I spoke to the gentleman that sold for permitting and individuals up here said there was no such thing. I think was there five or seven I told you that were already approved to do what I would like to see us do. It's not going to give us a great big bunch of life, but we may get. Maybe 10, 12 years of additional life.
Well, the only thing I was going to suggest, if we're going to build a transfer station and we only had two years left to take demo. Why not look at a different property to do the transfer station that's a lot better for trucks, more trucker friendly area than mid-hollow road?
I agree with you on that.
If there's, if that's a possibility.
The possibility would be, if we had it. Not only is it a transfer station building, then you'll have a new skill set that you'll have to set up. Now, there's a lot.
It may not be fixed. Well, I just, I just was thinking about that.
I'm going to try to look at all areas and I'm going to see what Mr. Lyons had done prior to. He had discussed some stuff with me, so, but I hadn't had an opportunity to check it.
Well, I just know when years passed and then if you had collisions out there, people know where the trucks got hauled both sides of the road and that's the only way to do it. And somebody comes around.
Mr. Lyons was, was. He had the flashers put up, the trucks on the road, which I think has really helped a lot. The highway department's keeping the trees trimmed back somewhat more so than what they, what was originally there.
It's just a thought, just to look at, you know, what county's property somewhere else is more trucker friendly. If the landfill's going to be kind of. Used other than the transfer station in two years anyway, why not?
I've got a list of all county owned properties, even, well, let me rephrase that. Up until two years ago. I don't know what else is going through the, through the land sale, tax sales. I'll get with Josh or I'll get with Mr. Laporte and get a list of those. And try to update that some and see what we can move forward with that. But if the plan that I have looking in the future with that happens. Will still be sitting there.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get another 10 or 12 years out of it.
Yeah. Can't promise, but. Our engineering firm, I've discussed it with her. She's interested. TDEC here is not real interested in any way, shape or form. But it's happening in the state of Tennessee now. It's happening in other states also. So, but like I said, there's five or seven somewhere in there in the state of Tennessee. It's, they are operating what we're looking at possibly doing.
One other question. I know one time that Benny had farmed out some, an outside subcontractor to haul that trash. To what? All those, one hand trucks down or whatever. Long term, would that be a cheaper option for the county is just to farm that out, not, not maintain and own the truck?
Southern used to haul it. And I don't know. I think they were consumed by CEI. And I have, to be honest, sir, I haven't been able to check on it.
I didn't know. I just, I just thought sometimes it is, it might be a little cheaper because that's all they do is run a trucking company. We're trying to run landfill plus a trucking company.
Well, it's the one truck we got from, from the highway department. They were having trouble with the air conditioning, blah, 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 the tires, the bumper. I've got, it wasn't from when it come from the highway department. It's just trash is a hard deal. I've got the AC working fairly well. I've got the oil leaks fixed. You know, it's got some odds and ends. Got the bumper pulled back and straightened up and we got the new tires in the front where it should be. Which raced it about that far off the ground. Well, that's a whole lot when you come off that tipper from a heavy load. All the trailers, all five of the trailers are somewhat operational. We had to check some, some brake systems up. Mr. Dingus showed me a very interesting thing. Might have been Friday or I can't remember, Thursday, one late afternoon. Air systems and stuff and we'll be working with him too. So we've implemented trucks be ready to go and rolling. So I think that's working out good for my truck drivers, getting inspected, getting taken care of. Truck drivers are not having to blow tires up before they leave. Trying to keep it very, very simple for them where they can get to rolling. I think today we've grown five. Adam, we had five total. You had four. You had four, but we had one more. She took.
Yeah, she took one.
One of the four or was that five total?
Five total.
Five total. Yes, sir.
Typical day about what it takes.
Adam, on a good day, Adam can pull four. It depends on how heavy it is. Because we, you know, we pay for that tipper every time we tip that.
Do you want, or do you make the most of it?
Yeah. So I, I try my best. Right now. The girl that works in the office, she's got children. She has to get them to school. Adam's in the same situation, taking care of his situation. So we're about eight o'clock, eight thirty, we're rolling out. But. Once everything levels out, we can get things going a little bit closer to time periods. Then we'll have one truck rolling at six thirty, six, six thirty heading that way. Get, get on the tipper route. Actually, we had the floor cleaned the other day, but now it's, it's back. It's, it's hard to keep up, but. We're doing the best we can. We got five trailers. It makes it a lot better. We're trying to fix tarts. I got a gentleman. I've got a needle coming from, from mine. Machine shop to sew those tarts because they're a knitted tarp, but they're a tight, fish tarp. So we're going to patch what we can. I thought tarts were ordered. I was let down on that and found out that they weren't. So we got a bunch of money to spend and we're still waiting for a release on our budget. I hope I answered your questions. Kind of covered some of the stuff I was going to cover anyways.
We'll skip E because we're still, Chris and I have not sit in and come up with anything about a new landfill director.
Can I just, what I'm going to do is try to build you a template with position, description, the variety and nature of the work. The duties, knowledge, skills and abilities of the individual be in place or requesting to be in place and the resume. Their knowledge of dealing with solid waste, truck drivers and. Getting all this together. Their minimum qualifications and supplemental qualifications on top of that. So I've worked on it, but I haven't had a whole lot of time to work on it. Be honest with you. I'll try to have y'all some information next month and so y'all can agree on it. I'll try to have more than just the directors. There'll be some other stuff there too.
We didn't have no new business last month. So. Who in the director's report? He's already.
Yeah, I pretty much covered that. Our, our dozer, our D6 right now, it's got some bushings and. Bushings and pins that need to be replaced. Probably came in that way from cutting. It's probably not so much coming from our landfill. It was just kind of wore down when we bought it. Our track hose up and running, thumb system. I've got to get some pins to get it right. Been pulling the pop rocks out of the, what I call pop rocks or stack stone, however you want to call it, out of the landfill, which TDEC requested us to do, get it moving. And we're trying to move all the purpose. We have moved our. Borrow pit area back to where it's supposed to be. So we're not undercutting anything at this time. Saturday we had kind of a semi emergency. We're having trucks and citizens getting stuck going into the demolition. I went ahead and took care of that and called in a couple of loads of shale and. Conning Pat, Mr. Simley went ahead and smoothed it up and we got it squared. And hopefully it'll hold some for tomorrow because this could be a mess. But to get his equipment running, we worked on the yellow dump truck, our road truck slash cover haul. And we've got it pretty good shape. It's, it's, it's running pretty well and. That's been a blessing. Trying to get all those tires. It's, it's tires is just ungodly. Trailer tires, we've got two. Had to put a drive wheel on, our turn wheel on the day. It's just, it's, it's interesting. Pop valves, things that were leaking down, which are a safety issue. We're taking care of them just as quick as we can. Luckily I told our local NAPA to go ahead and order them. I bought them out the other day to make it work. So. You know, there's a lot of wheels turning. Recycling's clicking on. I had a gentleman down there with the trustee doing some cleanup. We're trying to get organization. You know. We used to be set up to do glass recycling years and years ago. That said, we've got a lot of equipment that is not being utilized by any way, shape or form. So if we're not going to do that, we need to go ahead and get it. I got a lot of stuff to go on. Got a lot of stuff that needs to be put in the recycling tubs as far as metal.
You've got some big equipment up there that's probably.
Got some huge equipment. It's got, something's got to happen to it. It's, it's in the way and. We would have had the black dump truck moving, but Uncle Yellow Jack had decided to build him a big, huge castle in there. So it, it got kind of ugly real fast, but luckily Mr. Jack went ahead and buried those inside the bed. So. We gave it a little notice. Still have a lot of illicit type dumping in our, in our C and D. We're trying to get them educated on that. And trying to keep as much recycling, as much as possible out of our class one area transferring. Said the truck's a Mack truck, which Mr. Dingus drives. He's supposed to, if not sooner, he's supposed to be off Friday. He's going to be a new daddy. And so our plan is, my plan is to get that truck, because it's still under warranty, over to the shop. And have a one day turnaround, honestly, supposedly. So I'm getting clarification that there will be somebody there to fix it Saturday morning or Friday afternoon late. Go pick it back up and have it redraw, haul trash again. The other truck, which had a overheating problem, we're working on it. We'll try to get it fixed. I met with. I can't think of the gentleman's name and TCAT. They're interested in assisting us on working on some of those trucks. We buy the parts their students work on. We have a motor swap that we may be doing or maybe a motor swap and a rear end swap. That I'm trying to. Give us another front loader, get it running, get it corrected. Give us another road truck, get it running and get it corrected that the motor's blown in. The rear end out of the, of the roll off truck is gone. So we're trying to replace it. I'm trying to. I'm kind of robbing Peter to PayPal, but if we can do that and then turn around and sell it for scrap, I think we're better off than trying to buy. I don't want to go in front of the full commission this year coming and say, hey, we still need another truck. I want to try to get something enough for a backup of a backup, if you understand what I'm saying. And that's pretty, I mean, other than all this recycling, trying to do all this other stuff. Thank God for Mr. Nave. He's Johnny on the spot. I asked him to do something down there and he's making the phone calls and doing everything. So we're in real good shape there and, and we've got. Coming back to Kep.
What about the? Leaving our phone line or whatever for credit? Have you got any idea?
I'm sorry to say.
Credit card machine? Card machine?
Oh, the card machine? To be honest with you, I have not checked on. Now, I do know that dealing with my office down here, we've moved forward to start doing that and. Company that we, Carter County Bank and all that, good to go. But the company, the Smart Gov. Bradley, whatever you want to call it, it's, 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 it's a dang near a headache. That we won't have to worry about up there. Carter County Bank, Mr. McKinnon will get it squared away. And then I forgot the gentleman Bill, I think's his name, that, that does all that for him. So hopefully we'll get that squared away. If we can get it introduced into the T. If we can get it introduced into the T weight, it'll be even better. So, uh, move forward with that. But right now, to be honest with you, I hadn't even thought of it much more than just a plat, you know, just a passing inkling. Sounds good to me.
Good. Uh, be sure to call me.
I want to have a couple of questions, please. Um, you mentioned Director Schuler, that Schuler, that you're doing one through seven plastics?
That's what we can recycle, yes ma'am. They will accept one through seven.
Cause, uh, Director Lyons had told all of us, uh, at one time, and it may have been last term, that we're only doing one and two plastics.
They can accept one through seven curbside who we've been utilizing, so.
Okay. Cause I've been turning the bottle over and if it's not a one or a two, I've been just putting it in trash.
Hopefully I'll have you, uh, and, and that was the key too. When we open up the, the 24 hour center, uh, when y'all get your big smiley faces on the newspaper, I'm going to have an article and Mr. John's going to write with me and, uh, and we'll get Elizabeth and Star. And we'll get our recycling a hundred percent as far as what we can pay. But right now per se, I can take a one through seven. And that's why I'm, I'm sorry.
Have you started or are you going to start separating metals out?
I still didn't hear you. Metals, metals, yeah, that's, I talked to Curbside the other day, uh, had a long discussion with the gentleman. And, uh, he was kind of upset because there was a mixed metal, uh, cans and aluminum mixed together. And, uh, yeah, we're going to do that. And I was, we mentioned it the other night about additional trustees eventually. That said, uh, unfortunate for us, there's a new state law that we have to put a leg band, leg, ankle monitor on our trustees. So that's something else we'll have to look at. Uh, me and Mr. Frehler, me and Sheriff Frehler will work diligently on making that happen. Cause if we can get our stream to come in and we can do a little bit better separating there, we'll be in good shape. There's a lot of stuff at recycling, like there's a roof on that back building that needs this, all of gone. Uh, that plastic was supposed to went to California. Me and Mr. Nay's been working with the gentleman out of California. They were supposed to pick it up, they didn't show up. I mean, it's just, it's a madhouse. And, uh, I would really like to get all seven if we can, even if we, if we do one bell of number seven or whatever in a year, it's one bell that didn't go demolition or we didn't pay for it. So.
The deal that we had with the city, like, uh, down on Mill Street, we're trying to replace that with our 24 seven recycling. Is that what we're trying to do?
That's what I assumed. I, I wouldn't really, and I don't know what the status says, I didn't pay attention to it. I've not been, it wasn't in my lane and I didn't pay attention. I don't know what happened there. Uh, I'm going to research it. Hopefully we can get back in, in all of us work together again. You know, that's just, that's the only way you're going to change the waste stream is everybody. I had a lady that emailed the county commissioner about the road going in there. Uh, I was going to talk about that too. I, I've got to, uh, get with Mr. Taylor, who we have the easement over and see if he and I can work something out where we can fix, there's some drainage problems there. Uh, if we get some piles that cross the road and come back into the main. And then Mr. Powell's shaking his head, he's seen it all, he knows it by heart. Uh, we will have to work on that. That's why I was checking on the, uh, how much the county commission said they were going to put into it and where the money's related at. So I'm trying to stay on top of it. It's, it's, it's a tough cookie sometimes.
I know, it's a lot and I don't expect all these things to be done. I just need to know at least what direction we're headed so that when people ask me, I'll have an intelligent answer.
My, my key is recycling's not a money maker per se. Recycling, if it self supports, is super. Get anything over that, it's great. But the thing about it is, is that changes the waste stream. That goes, and what's going in, taking up air, which is what the landfill is, is air. And that's what you're permanent for, a certain amount of elevation, certain amount of airspace that you deal with. If you can take 25 cubic yards a week out of that airspace and take that out of Sullivan County's airspace, that's 25 cubic yards, we're not paying to dump. And we're taking and recycling into money, which is going back into our solid waste funds.
Speaking of recycling that she just mentioned, the, how that happened, all that come about, Mr. Estes, city manager, and I sat down discussing all that. He says the city is not in the recycle business. They were down there dumping couches, trees, homes.
Citizens were dumping that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's hard to keep clean.
Yes, sir.
So the city's not in recycling business, they just throw in land. We didn't have employees to go clean it up and it was getting, you know, just an ice or every time you go through there, everything piled up. So we shut that down so nobody could go down there and dump stuff down there. That's when we started working on the, the part up there so that we could have a 24 hour. It's right there at it, the boys could go down there and pick anything up, you know, cause they're right there. They don't have to get in the truck, excuse me, get in the truck and drive 30 minutes cleaned up because we didn't have the manpower to do it.
Who invested the money in that on the corner? Did we invest the money? Did the city invest the money? Did the city? No, I'm asking a question.
City owns the dumpsters.
Yeah, the city owns the dumpsters, they own the land. We just used it to get the revenue from whatever.
Do you think if, uh, I'm shooting off the hip on this one. Do you think if Mr. Estes, I and you and the, uh, and the police chief sit down and, uh, their, uh, public works guy?
Pins on?
Who?
Is it pins on?
No, no, that's John. Mr. Hill, if we all sit down, we can, we'll argue on that. It's bad.
I think we need to get our, first, get this rolling.
Well, I, I agree, but I'm saying maybe we can work out something. Who's better than one? I don't know, but one in Lionsville, I guess it's been shut down too, right?
Yeah, the city's citizens are asking me a lot about these places. So I know we've had conversations, but maybe a different person and a different approach. Could take those conversations further?
Yes, ma'am. Always remember we're county employees and county elected, but you're also representing those people that live in the city or, or part of our county. So never forget that. That's very important. Even the city of Watauga, don't forget that too. So we try to assist them on building inspections and things. We've done a cursory agreement. So hopefully we can move forward and make something happen. I, I'll do my best to that. It's not going to happen.
That was the biggest thing, they just said we're not in recycle business, they didn't have employees. They want their job to keep it clean. We didn't have the employees.
Maybe we can do, even if, if we had somebody there on Saturday, you know, something, maybe we can work out. Yes, sir.
Sure. If we're willing to do this to keep landfill employees from having run down there, we're going to have three full-time workers. I've got the people, I just don't have the equipment. I know we will help maintain that at Mill Race. If somebody were to dump that, I'll have them check that several times a week. Instead of pulling people from the landfill, I have a couple inmates throw that stuff in truck take, if that will help. I'll be, I'll be willing to sit in on the maintenance.
Thank you. I already asked you that, Mr. Frehler, or Sheriff Frehler, if you'd be interested.
It'll help, I mean, cut down on the, stuck on up there. And get the recycle going, I'll help it.
Thanks.
You're still going to have to go down and pick it up. We have the manpower for that.
Yes, we got a roll off.
Pretty much, maybe not daily, but close.
Hopefully, once we do some, couple more truck drivers hires and with Burnham being back, thank God, uh, we will be able to handle that.
That, that was also a problem. It would fill up, so then they would just put it in the floor, you know, on the ground or whatever. Then he had, you know, people leaving and quitting or whatever. And then, you know, he didn't have the manpower to rotate it, keep, keep it rotating. That was one reason that he would close it occasionally off.
And that's something we can look at, even if we just opened it up Friday, Saturday and Sunday, you know, or something. We'll figure out something. I think we all can get together and, and beat our heads. But my priority right now is to get our 24 hour convenience center open and rolling. At least we have a place to, to bring it into.
Right, well, the city residents, can you see it? It's?
Yes, ma'am.
In the city, so.
Try to have them a decent road that they can drive on too.
If I can go now, did we have a unexpected inspection to show up?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Uh, we had a surprise inspection for Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation on our class four facility, which is our C and E at our transfer station. Uh, on our class four facility right now, we had, uh, a little bit of, uh, flagging. That's where stuff's kind of sticking up. Uh, and we had some waste that was over the hill. Uh, the gentleman, uh, took and brought that up on Saturday. We got that cleared off. Uh, the report that I made, uh, was not turned in prior to me taking this position. So I met with him and I'm going to be sending that report in. Our tires were taken, we're trying to get a load out a week, if not more. Uh, so I'm rolling pretty heavy on that. But on this surprise inspection, uh, we did have a little bit of exposed solid waste on our C and D. We had, uh, our random inspection program, uh, the individual wasn't given the proper paperwork to fill out on each one of them. He's just been keeping a notepad, so that's moved forward and he has the information that he needs and we're going forward with that. Uh, I'm looking right now, uh, I'll put it out for bids. The state of Tennessee wants us to do a flyover of LIDAR. I have, uh, requested engineering for that. Uh, I have found a group that can do it, but they're not licensed surveyors. I found a group that can do it. They're environmentals and they have a licensed surveyor, but he's not licensed in the state of Tennessee. And I found two places here in the state of Tennessee that can fly and they do fall under our $5,000 bid. So I'm, I'm looking just a couple more days and then we're going to move forward with that. We'll get it flown. Uh, I do want a licensed Tennessee land surveyor, uh, with the possibilities of having a civil engineer, our company that we've been utilizing, uh, to take that. We're going to restake and get our sales correct on our C and D. And I'm moving forward with it and, uh, and going with that. But our working cover, we're covering as fast as we can. Uh, where they were bar pitting was outside the realm of, uh, where it should have been. And, uh, I'm looking for the grass seed and some other stuff that's, that's supposed to be up there. And, and I've not found it yet, so we'll be getting that. So I'm working on it. It's just, uh, being very aggravating. I think I sent everybody a copy, one's a seven page copy. It has basically a report where we walked, uh, being the gentleman from T deck in the transfer facility. We did have a little bit of, uh, garbage outside of it at the time. Uh, that was our biggest hit, uh, but none of these ended up being a NOB because we're using, uh, we've been really diligent at working on it. Uh, I was going to say there's one more. That was where we had, everything pertaining was, was outside of our, our transfer station floor at that time. I think that day we ended up, I had, uh, three, three people out, uh, maybe four, four people out. And, uh, with that said, that was one of our big days when our local dumping people show up. So, uh, like I said, it was a surprise inspection. It was very interesting and, uh, got up there as quick as I could. And being the gentleman, we walked it all, we walked the face of the C and D, we walked the transfer station. We went and talked about some of our existing class one area and we discussed that. And we actually talked about the transfer station proposal that, uh, I was talking about earlier. Does that answer your question, ma'am? But I should have sent everybody. Actually, did you, I don't know if I, did you get yours, this information? Yes, ma'am. Uh, with that said, I know it's somewhat aggravating, but like I said, I'm kind of transparent. I send you guys information, except for Ms., Ms. Brown, but now I've got her phone number. But, uh, I try to send it every Friday or maybe Saturday, depending on what it is. Uh, try to give you somewhat of an update, what's happening, okay? Where, where, where we're going, what's, you know, rolling in as far as that. Uh, on Sunday afternoon, uh, when I turn my phone back on at three o'clock or a little after, I try to send out my employees, our employees, uh, information for the following day to get us rolling. And then we work with that the rest of the time.
What else can you tell me?
I've got one thing, Mr. Chairman, I was.
Yes, sir.
And it's going to go back in memory. The old, if I remember where the old transfer station was.
Sycamore Shells Drive.
Drive, and that's where the animals, across from it was the location of the previous animal shelter. Well, of course, the, the concrete abutments and walls and everything is there, but it's overgrown. And myself, I thought back in my mind, that was auctioned off.
Yeah, well.
Is it probably owned?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm out to find out. Of course, here's the problem that we're facing down there. We've got complaints from some residents that we have homeless people on the back side of the state.
Yes.
Encamped between near the end of the river. And I didn't know if that's our county property still yet.
Yes, sir. But that is a good thing for you now.
We went out there at the time thinking it was still a county property. I thought it was probably owned and we were still.
I think Mr. Burr knows that individual and owns it.
No, it's a lady lives there next to the old home. She knows they're there. She says they're fine to be there, so. They've got a camper up there now, so they've set up their home stand.
No, one other thing too, I've been working with the lady before. About every day, sometimes multiple times a day with finance department, trying to get this information back and forth. Burnham was, uh, Mr. Clemmons was phenomenal this morning. He walked in and found the information I needed and he told me where the rest of the information is. So we got that one squared away. Uh, uh, the rest of the information we can pull for the other convenience center. And, uh, our billings and reconciliation of the billings, I'm working on hopefully. When I get back into the T weights, maybe I can find that information. But, uh, I've been cut out of, for some reason, I was put in then discharged.
There's going to come times, they're going to get cut into it. Because, uh, when the officers come in, after it was exposed on the floor of this commission, uh, council receivable, that nobody in this whole total commission for years had any clue to think what that indicates.
Yes, sir.
And to have a director say in the city that documents are not available, guess what you're looking at?
I agree.
And then you have an ongoing investigation. We do not know what it consists of, what it pertains to, what they're looking at, according to our county attorney and to our mayor. And I can just imagine, now maybe food, but we have to, uh, find out the documentation or anything because if you don't, we're going to take a hit hard in the finance side of this county. And that's what we have been defeating for the past year, going from one employee to a full group. Now we're getting, we're finding errors back as much as eight years that we're having to come back and reconcile all the way up to date. Now we've come up with that. So, so what we're having to deal with. So, so what we're having to deal with. But I was at the transfer station. What I was more concerned about more than any because of the inhabitants around her.
Yeah, I think, I think our transfer stations will be all right once we get to and then we've got a way to reconcile those and move forward. And I, I have not met Mr. Morgan yet, but I do know Burnham and Burnham was here many years ago. And I've talked to him and he's very complicit as far as working with us and getting this squared away. He's a team player. Any else?
Johnson, remember when you were talking about the old transfer station, Bill Hider, I think was all of them that's at. Taking it to see ground state. That's where the old dump used to be. Ground state out there.
You got an old dump there, see ground staff. You got an old dump right up in these sides. You got to eat one on the Johnson County, Carter County line. You got one right out here on the relics.
About the best thing that would happen in a landfill, I think, is we can come up. Let me tell you, that'll wear as a pad of a cap. It is a cash cow. Now it's worn out. Its design purpose was, I think, daily tiny, 69 ton per day designed for everything. Building size, volume. Small issues. You can go in and put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig.
Now that's, if we can get 20 more years or 10 more years, that C and D, make that work.
Are you dreaming or hallucinating?
Dreaming right now. Hallucinations come later, but.
At least we don't have some problems. He's found somebody on the road.
Second emotion. All approved.
Well, let's stay around a little bit longer. Probably got nothing else.